Good evening and welcome to our March 1st special meeting and first budget workshop. We're going to begin our meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm calling this special meeting to order. We have three items on the agenda: a calendar, the bus proposition, and a tax cert. So Brian, nope Carmen, you're doing the calendar.
Thanks Sue. So this is the second read and final read, correct Cindy? This is the final read?
Yep.
Second reading and the final reading, right? So we can get this out to families if the board approves. This is the school calendar for next year. It is your basic school calendar. The biggest change for next year, as we talked about at the last meeting, is that the school goes to the very last week in June, graduation on the 30th of June. And because the school year is extended, there actually will be a holiday, a long weekend in March, which we don't tend to have, but this one will be on March 22nd. But other than that, all the typical bells and whistles are there in this calendar. Questions?
Any questions?
Can't change any holiday during the winter.
Nope, nope, can't. February break is still there.
I see you preserve the half days.
Half day parent conferences, correct. Yep.
And we still get the same amount of possible snow days if we need that.
Correct, yep. So we'll build in three days next year, just like we did this year. And no, there will not be a snow day tomorrow.
You know, I got asked that several times today.
So the Regents exams are the reason why you have graduations so late, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there reasoning why they push those out?
Because they can.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, I don't know the rationale. Yeah.
We start on the...
Fourth.
Alright, are there any other questions? Can we have a motion please?
No move.
Second, Jan. All in favor of approving the calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, four zero. Mr. Freeman, bus proposition, please.
Yes, bus proposition. So this year, we'll explain a little bit more on the transportation budget. But the proposition will require a roll call vote tonight. This is just the board's rubber stamp approval for us to borrow for it and to put the correct wording on the ballot in the proposition in May.
Anybody have any questions?
It's the same number of buses as last year?
Actually, one less bus. Last year, we had an additional wheelchair accessible bus purchased than this year. So the overall amount is smaller that we'll be borrowing for this upcoming 18, 19 year than we did in 17, 18.
Brian, did we trade all those or did we sell those separately?
We sell them, we surplus them.
So you're looking at just the net of what we're looking at?
We do not count that against this price because of what we surplus them. All of our buses that we surplus are in the 10 to 12 year range. Some of the smaller ones are even closer to 15. They have about 100 to 110,000 miles on them. The bodies by that time are fairly close to being shot. So we get, on the small ones, maybe $250 a bus and for the big ones, if we're lucky, a thousand.
That goes in general fund then?
Yep.
The difference, okay. We definitely need buses. I saw one the other day, it looked like John Candy's car in Uncle Buck. And it sounded like it too, going through my neighborhood. That's terrible.
Alright, any other questions?
Any motion?
A motion.
Sorry, yes. Mike and Linda?
And then roll call vote, Jan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright. That's approved, the tax cert case.
Sure. Right now, what I have presented to you is the Webster Fairport Lodge. It's the Elks Lodge tax actuary proceedings. They have, going back to 13, 14, challenged the assessment for the past five years. In essence, what they're trying to do is become fully exempt property as like, you know, off the rolls like they're any kind of other, you know, not-for-profit exempt type of organization. In exchange for removing that petition, we will, in partner with the assessor in the town, drop the assessment down. This gives us some stability on this case. It closes it and gives us about three years' worth of no further challenges. And I think mutually agree that all the parties are happy with this settlement. And, you know, our refund that we would be out is $12,137.50 for all those years. You know, not one of the more substantial cases that we've closed that I've brought to you guys. So, any questions on it specifically?
Actually, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do other towns or other school districts and towns have the stipulation that as long as there's not a reassessment on the properties, then they can't sue for the five years?
Right, the stipulation is locking in this agreement.
For five years? Okay, so if we did a reassessment, you would just have to keep them at the same level?
They would have to honor this agreement.
Okay, alright. So that doesn't mean you can't do a reassessment, it just means that this agreement is...
Right, this one, this property would become off limits, I guess, to a reassessment.
Except for five years, right?
I won't use the word exempt because...
Reduced.
Yeah, reduced. Their assessment would be based on the settlement agreement.
Would they be exempt from any increases?
Correct, because they would stay at this level.
Not increases in tax rate?
Well, no, if it's reassessed.
Correct.
As far as property value.
Their assessed value stays the same.
This is one property you could skip over during the reassessment.
Yes, okay. Alright, any other questions? Could we have a motion?
No move.
Linda and Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, four zero. Alright. So that brings an end to our special meeting, so the special meeting is adjourned. And now we will begin our workshop. In Webster, we strive to create an excellent educational environment and provide all students with the knowledge, skills, and opportunities to be successful as learners, workers, and citizens. In addition, we strive to be fiscally responsible and propose a budget that will be supported by a majority of our community. Tonight, we're going to hear about our projected revenues and expenses related to central services, community ed, debt service, athletics, benefits, transportation, and buildings and grounds. Our next workshop is March 22nd, and at that time, we'll be hearing probably updated revenues and we'll be talking about staffing. So without further ado, if you'd like to get started, Brian?
Sure, thank you very much. So our budget season is in full swing right now. March is a very busy month for us with that, as we carefully look to see what is happening in Albany and what impact that will have on us as we go forward. So, just going to go over our revenues tonight. Leave out state aid for the most part, we'll wait till the next workshop to get a more in-depth look at state aid. Expenditure areas, we're going to look at our central services, our central office areas, buildings and grounds, transportation, community ed, our debt service, and benefits. I know originally, we had talked about athletics, but we're not quite there with that budget yet, so we're going to save that for next time in what we're going to do there. And just kind of, you know, go through these major component areas and please, you know, questions as we go along in this manner, so. So first thing I want to do is just some revenues that we often, we often always look at, what's the tax levy, what's our state aid? Because those are by far the, you know, 91% I think of our entire revenue comes from those two areas. So those get the most attention. But we do have some other major revenue categories that I want to just kind of go over and do a two-year comparison for you tonight. Sales tax, we are lucky to have sales tax in Monroe County that's split amongst the districts. We have stayed relatively stable with our sales tax, projecting that to stay the same in 18, 19 as well. So we budget $7,350,000 for that, that we project that to be flat. Rental of our property, especially with BOSI's, we rent out some of our rooms for BOSI's, making that to stay flat as well. Interest, staying flat, but with the caveat that we're actually almost close to getting $100,000 a year now with some of our investments. We've been short of that number in the past couple of years. We haven't quite fully achieved the amount that we've budgeted. But I think next year will be the year, like I would, that we'll actually get $100,000 because we've been pretty, pretty on top of in the business office of trying to maximize our interest rates going forward. Pilots, payments in lieu of taxes, those are flat year to year. Last year, you might remember, we did increase that because we saw an uptick in pilots. But this, between this year and what we're projecting for next year to remain relatively flat, we've had a couple go off and we have had a couple more coming on, so relatively the same size, so we'll stay right around that same amount. Miscellaneous revenues, that's one that's an increase, I'll take a minute to kind of break that down a little further as well. So what goes into our miscellaneous revenues? It's our BOSI's refund, it's the rental of our other facilities, what we charge to use the Aquatic Center, or the Field House, or our gyms, or our fields. All of our continuing education programs, any revenue we make from there go into this area as well. And programs such as our Medicaid billing from the federal perspective get lumped into these miscellaneous revenues. So why is it going up by quarter of a million dollars? Two reasons why. First, BOSI's refund is a large, we're a large part of BOSI's. We're obviously the largest part of Monroe One BOSI's. I think we account for about a quarter of their total administrative budget. We spend a lot of money with them. BOSI's has to, in essence, break even at the end of the year. So, once they close their books on 2017, 18, sometime in October, they'll say, okay, every district, you get X amount of dollars back. That's our BOSI's refund. We've been increasing our spending with BOSI's, whether it's our software that we've increased, all of our technology is going through BOSI's, significant amount of our professional development now is going through BOSI's. So we're actually spending more money than ever there, so our refund participation will increase. So that's a large part of this, why we're expecting some more money to come on the revenue side from there. Secondly, is we're raising prices on all of our items. We're raising prices to rent our facilities, we're raising the prices to utilize our custodial staff or security staff for those events, so we're taking in more income. We're also raising the prices on the continuing education programs we run. The largest continuing education program we run is aquatics, whether it's the Learn to Swim, it's the Water Aerobics, we have strong participation. You know, we've, I think it was two years ago now, we opened the Aquatic Center up and the Thomas Pool on Sundays because of the demand for our Learn to Swim program. And in two years, we still have waiting lists to get into those programs. So, but they're also the most impacted by minimum wage, I think you've heard me discuss that as well. So as those costs go up, for the students that are lifeguards and, you know, many of our instructors in the program are members of the high school swim teams, so as their wages go up, we're raising the raises. So you see the increase on the budget side when we've discussed over the last two years. Those costs, we've been able to kind of bear a little bit, but next year, we're looking, we're going to raise the prices on some of those. We've done them minimally, you know, wages have gone up seven, eight percent in those programs, but we haven't escalated the price of, you know, like the Learn to Swim, I'll take as an example, add an eight percent increase. Next year, we're going to look to do that because we can't eat that cost any further. And, you know, the demand is still there. So I think the public that is participating is still finding great value in where our price point is, with the fact that we have waiting lists in spite of raising the prices minimally last year. But you'll see that difference going into next year, so that's why we have some more revenue showing up there. Reserves, we've kept flat what we've applied from 17, 18 to 18, 19. Appropriative fund balance is also kept flat. Just did a very brief overview of those, reserves and appropriate fund balance for our budget advisory committee. And then our property tax levy, which I presented just about three weeks ago now, I think it has been to the board. Nothing has really changed with that. We've gotten no updates from the state that would alter the formula at this point. None of our numbers have changed, so that is still the same. So those areas are the next major components, and we'll discuss state aid actual numbers in greater detail come next workshop. Any questions on those?
I have one question.
Yeah.
How do they determine what each district gets as far as the total sales tax that they're splitting up? So Webster being a larger district, I mean, is there a formula they use or how do they do that?
You know, I've never seen the formula on how they do it. I just get the quarterly updates with the check saying that your portion of it. I'd have to look further into that, it's not something I've ever really poked around. It comes directly from the county.
Have we ever seen other districts and what they get as far as the city and everybody?
I've never looked at that data of what other...
You can do that first.
I know we do get a larger chunk. Grease, obviously, we get the largest, being the size of the district, but...
Okay. We get a list of that, just to look, I'm kind of curious on how that looks.
Yeah, I'd have to dig around, but I'm sure I could find it.
Alright, thanks Brian.
No problem. So just a couple state aid changes that I wanted to point out to you from the last time we met though, as we go through the month of March, and, you know, you participate in Monroe County School Board's events and here other things. So what are some changes that have happened to Webster? What's driving some of the numbers that we'll get greater information on? So the first thing is our combined wealth ratio. I want to do a year-to-year comparison. We were at .88, state average is 1. Going into 18, 19, we're now at .9. So the long and short of it is, the state is saying Webster as a district is now, you know, two percentage points wealthier. So that's, that...
But still under average, though.
We're still under average, which in upstate New York, there's very few districts that are a one or above. Most of the districts that are ones are Long Island, Westchester, that are significantly higher. But, you know, those, that combined wealth ratio drives all of our state aid formulas. Our BOSI's aid ratio has stayed relatively stable. Our transportation aid ratio has gone up slightly, so we'll get a little bit more money on the transportation expenditures. Where the combined wealth ratio really has an impact and those economic drivers are on our public access cost and our private access cost ratio, because those are very economically driven. So last year, public access cost, that would be on special education students going to BOSI's, we're getting about 55% on every dollar over 37,173. For 18, 19 now, the way, under the governor's proposal, we're getting 54% on every dollar over 39. So because we've become wealthier, the needle has moved on those two. Same thing with the private access cost ratio. It's moved less than the public because it's a smaller number overall, but still some impact on that. So I just wanted to get that information out to you guys this month as well. But no changes in our, really in our instructional materials aid. We still get 58.25 per student for textbook, 14.98 per student for software, 6.25 per pupil for library books. And for hardware, we get 24.20 multiplied by our water ratio, which is about 65%. So every kid, we get 65% of 24.20 to buy hardware and equipment.
Quick question, Brian.
Yes.
So the threshold there, the 37,000 and the 39,000?
Yep.
Those numbers are consistent county-wide?
No.
So they change them?
They change.
Those change as well as the rate?
Correct.
So both the numbers change?
Correct.
So how do you, how are you able to track that or project it, or aren't you?
I do my best to, you know, estimate.
There's a sort of formula?
Yeah, there's a sort, there is a formula that I just kind of plug in some data into, but, you know, this is, now that we have this, we don't know that formula, we don't see that until it's published with the governors run. So we see the numbers first, we see the big overall, you know, $6 million for transportation aid, $5 million for excess cost aid, but we don't see what's really driving it. And then we get a thick book, maybe three weeks later, that has the formulas behind it, so then I could take those and say, oh, okay, this is what's happening.
Okay.
So you can kind of project?
Correct. So right now, I can project 18, 19 because I have these numbers now. So it's like, okay, I could take all of our students, put them through this formula, and it'll spit out a number that I think would be an accurate amount for those two aid categories.
And it'll probably be less because we're wealthier.
Right, and that's in essence what it's doing. It might not, but I will say this, you know, when we go over this at the next workshop, it might not be less dollars because we're putting more kids into the system. So you might actually see, we're getting less aid, but more costs still give us more final dollar aid perspective. We might not lose aid because of this.
The .2% increase in that, is that a large increase on a year basis or not? How is that considered?
You know, it's right there. We've gone down that same amount in a year-to-year before, we've gone up a little bit more than that, so it's about average.
And what drives that? How do they figure that number out?
That is driven by two things, well, excuse me, three things. Pupils? And how much income wealth is in the district and how much property wealth. So you take the total property wealth in the district, divide it by how many kids you have, every kid gets a dollar figure with them. You take how much is on everybody's New York State tax returns that lives in the district, divide it by how many kids we have, every kid gets a dollar value assigned to them. Then those two numbers are compared to the state numbers, and so we're at 90% of what the state average is for those numbers. So the first part of our budget is really the third floor district office, those things that we control from an administrative perspective. So here's just some of the things, the district operations that's included in this, you know, the board costs, the district clerk costs, our budget vote, superintendent's office, finance, personnel, what we pay for insurance, our school association dues, and then any of our tax certs, so that $12,000 that you approved earlier is budgeted out of here. And that's where that expenditure goes in these administratives. But also our BOSI's administrative budget, what is our share of the BOSI's budget. So here, here's where we are with those categories right now for salaries, supplies, contractuals, insurance, and those BOSI services. We're up 2.37% overall. You might notice why are salaries a little bit higher and out of line with maybe some of our other rate increases? There's two reasons there. One is, obviously, you'll probably hear this a lot, minimum wage. We pay every pole worker that we have and all those support staffs out of here, so those are going up at 7%. And surprisingly, you know, for the whole day, what that will add up to be. And also, we're moving an FTE over from the instructional side into the business office that will, you'll see next workshop where that's coming out of, but it's ending up here and split between those two areas. So you're seeing an extra FTE, 1.0 FTE in those two lines. So 1.0 FTE really can swing, swing that cost change from year to year. Some minor reductions on supplies, remember, we do everything zero-based, so we took like, what do we really need to order to get us through next year, so. And a small increase to BOSI's, our administrative costs and what we do there. So how does that look? I always like this slide because I think it's, it really shows what administratively are we paying for the most? And 42% of this budget is going directly to BOSI's, it's our share of the administrative costs of Monroe One BOSI's. So I think that is, you know, a huge chunk, and I always like to point that out, that it is not our salaries and administrative overhead, it is what we're required to. This is what we're mandated to participate in, and it's our largest expense. This is, this is that budget that we always hold the special meeting for in April?
8:00 AM.
At 8:00 AM, because they have a different time requirement of when it's due. So this is what gets voted on at that time. Next, and to help me with the next is the Buildings and Grounds budget. Mr. Cunningham has graciously decided to stop his plow preparations for 4:00 in the morning to come join us tonight. So just a quick, what are Buildings and Grounds? We have 134 permanent employees, 30 part-time seasonal workers, you know, 1.5 million square feet of buildings, 240 acres of land. And all the requests for that area for 18, 19 need to be submitted by December 22nd. And we always prioritize three areas, health and safety always come first. Any requests in those areas are weighted very heavily program, and then the aesthetics come third. Sometimes, you know, they like to jump that to number one, but it comes last from our perspective. So what's the department accomplished in the past year? 90% of the SmartBond project at this point, cameras, key card access points, and assisting with all the wireless, new wireless access points. Done a fantastic job in-house with that. All the necessary lead testing and reporting that we had to do, it's done. Nine buildings have been converted to LED lights in the parking lots, that was all done in-house. And installed lockdown buttons district-wide, and countless, countless other small little projects throughout the district that they've tackled. Any other ones you want to add, Blake?
Collectively, yeah, we just wanted to really, you know, focus this year on the health and safety and the security of the school district, of course, so that was definitely a priority for us.
So what's on the horizon? Part of this budget plan is a $100,000 capital outlay project. We have been doing these since the day I got here and put it onto the budget because it's money we'd be spending anyways, and so why not get state aid back for it? Next, in 18, 19 is dedicated to Plank North. We've been rotating these around the highest need areas of the district. What do they need to get done? Repairs needed for the water line coming into the building, and some refurbishment of the old gym locker areas to a more usable space. We've been doing this at many of the other buildings, converting it to OT, PT space, multipurpose areas. But Plank North, that water line, it's the oldest elementary building we have, and it really needs substantial work, so this is being planned for 18, 19.
Is that work just all inside, you're not adding on, correct? Just inside work?
No, no, this is, yeah, for $100,000.
Not a lot.
Yeah, it's not a lot. You know, we do it anyways, but doing it this way through the state, we're going to get $74,000 in aid back the next year, so. But it's the water line that's coming from the road, so you'll see outside, you'll see them digging up to replace that. So Buildings and Grounds overall, you know, zero-based as well, you can see, have some changes. Overall, they're at 1.92% increase. Salaries, might be wondering, why are they going up? One reason and one reason only? Minimum wage. All the substitutes, we, you know, we have close to 80 cleaners district-wide, and so, you know, just like any other group, when they're out, we still want the buildings clean, so we bring in a significant amount of substitutes in that area like we do for teachers aides, teaching assistants, and teachers. So minimum wage is having a huge impact on that, and so is the student workforce.
Is that what a sub gets minimum wage?
For the most part.
Yes, our summer help does, and our long-term substitute gets $10.50.
You know, so that's kind of skewing the salaries, but in a couple areas, we got some savings. First one is in the contractual area, it's, you know, I guess I'll, so where are we driving those salaries? Department has really been able to maintain an ability to perform repairs and improvements while maintaining flat budget lines for the past... Department has really been able to maintain an ability to perform repairs and improvements while maintaining flat budget lines for the past several years. So it's a testament to Blaine and his crew. Where are we saving money? Our costs for architectural and engineering consultants, we have a flat retainer that we set aside for those, for things to happen. But we're in the middle of a capital project, so those costs get absorbed in the capital project. We don't need those extra monies, so little savings there. BOSI's, you're seeing a reduction on those numbers as well, because our phone infrastructure is now converted completely to the voice-over IP address system. So you'll see an increase in their BOSI's costs in instructional technology where we pay for all that telecom, but we're seeing a savings over here with buildings and grounds. So that has been reduced. And then with the work that we're going to be doing at Spry that has a lot of blacktop repair, that's in the project, so we don't need to budget for that in the actual year-to-year budget. So a small savings there as well to bring the numbers to just under two percent for next year.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
As we're all finding that minimum wages are driving up, and so my question to you, Blaine, is is that if minimum wages are driving up the cost of what we have here, what's that doing to the next pay level or the next either salary hourly level? Because if you have somebody making X, and all of a sudden, you know, Y is moved up to X, but that's a job that's a higher paid job, is that getting pushed up also?
That's, Dave Swinson and I, we take care of that through negotiations in the contract.
Which they did last year.
Yeah, which they did, which we did last year. Yeah, this is the first year of their new contract.
Okay.
So right now, there's a four-year contract that just started.
Okay, so after that four years, we're going to see that even more than?
Who knows what the state's going to do at the end of that four years? I think that, and at times, to be right in line with that month will be when division of budget decides, is it stay at twelve fifty or does it go to fifteen dollars an hour? And then we'll see how the state reacts to that, because that's that's four years from now when that will happen, so. Have some time to soak that all in before it happens, if it ever even happens. So. So there's just a visual perspective of where that money comes from. You see our next two largest expenditure areas are gas and electric for the buildings and grounds budget. So small portions of the buildings and grounds budget, so quite often we get, oh, how can you save money, turn off those lights, or maybe unplug that microwave or that Keurig? It's such a small slice of the overall piece of pie, and I always just like to to mention that, that there's not tangible savings with that a lot of the time. Any other questions for Blaine before he heads back to the plow truck?
Yeah.
Or shall I say, get a good night's rest before he gets up in the morning?
I'd just like to publicly thank you, Blaine, for those wonderful thorough tours through all the buildings. I feel like, you know, I certainly learned a lot marching through our secondary schools, and that was a great tour over at Club North, too. I appreciate it.
Great, that's appreciated. It's always an honor to show up, you know, what our staff does, because they're really terrific people that put kids first and and do the right thing, so thank you for that.
It was great.
All right. All right, we'll move on to transportation. So transportation, can you notice we're always continuously advertising for drivers? We're still in a good place for staffing, much, much better than we were two, three years ago. To the point where we're actually looking to where does it make sense to expand the department? And I think this will make a little bit more sense when I show you some numbers in comparison to our transportation budget. You know, pull back some BOSI's runs where it's appropriate, because we're finding that, you know, we've outsourced to BOSI's that, you know, those runs that we've normally outsourced, they're having problems finding support for. So we're having to take them on anyways because they're not there to to support it anymore. So why not just start looking at doing that in-house? And the facility needs some improvements, you know, it's a real capital project planning, because there's a lack of parking, parking, parking. Right now, we are shuttling during the winter, we shuttle drivers from Willink over, and we also have a special, very special program instead of like, take your teacher home to read with you, we call it take your minibus home with you. So if you live in Webster and your run is on a minibus, you can take that minibus home with you. So your car does not have to stay or park and take up a spot, and that bus doesn't have to stay and take up a spot, because that's how short we are for parking spots.
And I bet the neighbors love it.
It's the little ones, so it blends in nicely. So. So what are our transportation numbers looking like for next year? Overall, a two point three nine percent increase salaries. Our monitors are at minimum wage, so you'll see that skew the data a little bit. Equipment, we are dropping down because it's a line we never used in transportation, and it always just sat there. So we're actually going to go put that to use at, actually in buildings and grounds for them to utilize. Because any transportation equipment we buy, actually, it has to be a bus, otherwise you don't get aid on it.
Yeah.
So we always utilize that money after the fact anyways. So everything else, all line items held flat across the board for for transportation heading into next year.
And Brian, do you think the reason that we're doing well in the number of bus drivers is because of the increase, what we're paying them, or?
Um, you know, when I first started here, you know, we, John Chees and I ran that data to see how we stacked up with the county. And, you know, we were middle, low-middle on on the scale, but I think we addressed that in that in a contract from, that was four, three, four years ago now. But I think actually it's a testament to the, to Renee, publicly Renee Reagan over at Transportation and the work that she's doing pounding the pavement with her network of people, of bringing back retirees and reaching out to people that have retired that could sub and take some of that off of us. But her, the system she has in place to train drivers, to get them in the system, to, you know, make them feel welcome and not want to leave once they get their license and, you know, we, I think, since we've started doing the train, offering the training for drivers for free, we've only lost one driver that has, okay, thank you for letting me get my license, and now I'm gone. We've only lost one to that, so of the few dozen that we've actually put through the process.
Great, I figured it had to have some intangibles in there besides just the basic.
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with Joe overseeing and with Renee and Tom and the and the crew of head bus drivers that we have, and really picking drivers that we have on staff to become driver trainers. You know, making that process for for picking those people more rigorous, more solid interview process, more qualification process, and getting great people to train the new drivers. That's made a huge difference. This chart, I just want to point out, because I alluded to it earlier, of why to bring back some of those BOSI's costs, because, one, we're finding that when we do try to outsource runs that we've historically done, they can't help us anymore because they're under a shortage. But also, if you see, it's it's a very large portion of this of the budget for transportation. You know, just under eighteen percent of the transportation budget is contracted out to BOSI's. So it's an area where we think we could maybe possibly do some cost savings in the future, granted if we had the space to do it, so. So, you know, it's one thing we're always looking at.
But speaking of, I'm sorry, speaking of the of the transportation budget, there will come a time real soon that we'll probably be coming to the board with a recommendation for a capital improvement for the expansion of the bus garage, so.
Is there room?
Do we have room there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Teeny bit. But it's worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're looking, uh.
Something's got to be done, especially if we end up going to a later start time, if the board decides to do that, we may very well need an extra six or seven buses, whatever it's going to end up being. And it's like, okay, you think, oh, it's only six or seven, but.
They're pretty big.
Right. And if, one of the things that's crunching us now is the construction that's going on over there at the adjacent properties. So we used to be able to get away with parking along the side, we literally would park people all the way up and down with a document drive there. But in the wintertime, it's very difficult, I know Blaine and his group has been great about bringing over truckloads of crushed stone, and, you know, we're encroaching on spots maybe that weren't meant to be parking areas. So, I mean, we're we're struggling with space, I think we were, we outgrew it the day we bought it, and are always kind of just chasing our tail with that.
All you have to do is be on Hard Road and watch the.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's amazing.
Oh, no, no, we can't, I mean, we're landlocked there.
We are landlocked. So our bus proposition for 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 eighteen nineteen. Uh, we're ten large-sized sixty-six passengers, five of the minibuses, and one wheelchair unit. Our total purchase price is just a shade over one point five million dollars. That is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, or the cost of one bus, less than we had last year on the proposition. So debt service, this is real quick and easy, this is just all of our principal and interest payments and our transfers that we perform. So you see what we're paying for our construction projects, what our interest is, what the total construction is at, about eight point six. And then our total bus bonds that we're borrowing, just about one point five. Small decrease of two thousand dollars this year over last year at ten million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and one dollars. And then our transfers, the transfer to capital is the Plank North project, and then the transfer to the federal fund is our part of our federal special education programs. That's that's our transfer over to that fund to pick up the difference that is not aided. So that has stayed real flat for the past several years, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So next up, the topic everybody loves loves to discuss is benefits. So benefits is the is twenty-six percent of the budget overall, it's the second largest portion after salaries. So what's increasing, what's decreasing? So what's increasing? TRS, that was a surprise increase this year, because last year we had tremendous savings to the benefits. We almost saved a million dollars in TRS costs from that rate drop into this seventeen eighteen. This year, you'll see, it's about a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. So why is it increasing? One, some actuarial changes. They changed their long-term outlook on investment returns from seven and a half to seven percent. So in essence, they're planning on making less money, so they had to adjust that, which made the rate go up. And also making some adjustments to the lifespan that people are staying into the pension system. You know, they do a projection, the average person's going to spend X amount of years. And in the pension system, they've increased that, which then increases the rate a little bit more. I don't know why they didn't do this when the rate was dropping significantly, it would have probably meant more sense that, so last year we wouldn't have gotten as much savings, but this year we wouldn't have gotten the increase. But, you know, we don't have control over that. So it is what it is. Social Security and Medicare is going up, as well as our benefits overall in a small increase to workers' compensation. So what's decreasing when it comes to benefits? And it's an increase, it's a decrease and an increase. The rate that health benefits have increased is decreasing, if that makes sense. So last year, we got clobbered with a very large, benefits went up almost two million dollars. But the decrease in TRS took some of the sting out of that. But this year, much more manageable increase to our benefits. Really, the move to the deductible plan saw some significant shift in that cost coming down. So that was very, very beneficial with those units that we have in it. So with the pension plans, here's the rate increases going back to two thousand, two thousand and one. It's the roller coaster ride, they very easily mirror each other. I have the average lines there, so this is teachers' retirement system. So we are still below the overall average of what the rate has been right now with the employee retirement system. We are above what the average has been for that system heading into next year. I think they've taken, the employer retirement system took a much more conservative approach to their windfall, it made their adjustments, and so we didn't see as much savings out of that system like we did with the teachers' retirement system. So those are the rate rates. This is what it's cost in dollars and cents since two thousand two, two thousand and three. So we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was our budget line item for the employees' retirement system. It is next year now at two point eight million dollars. And we, in two thousand two, two thousand and three, our TRS was at one point three million, it is now seven million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars. I did not make this the roller coaster ride, I just went from one data point to the next, otherwise you would have seen that one point three go up, come down, go back up, come down. So just from one point to the from to the next of of what's happened with those two systems, yes?
What strategy are you thinking about in the future to drive, get that number down?
That one is not controlled by us. That one is.
Who controls that?
The Teachers' Retirement System Board, and the comptroller controls the employee.
And it's all through the state?
It's all through the state. They set that rate. So if you go back, I'll go back a slide. So Employee Retirement System, somebody wanted to be governor.
Okay.
There's where the rate was, remember, if you remember, Governor McCall, he wanted to be governor, lost to Pataki, he was the comptroller at the time. So you see how there's some political aspect into how some of these things are operated.
I get it.
We have no control over it.
Okay.
So there's our pensions, what we're we're looking at for next year. And then workers' comp, one that you see has escalated increasingly over the last several years, leveled off the last three years, small increase going into eighteen nineteen. But still significantly higher than where we were ten years ago. A lot of this, too, we have very limited control over because of the Workers' Compensation Board set by New York State. And when they increase benefits, that's increasing our costs. We do our best as part of a workers' comp consortium in the county, but, you know, our hands are tied significantly on the benefits that are allocated through the Workers' Compensation Board.
Did we show an increase or a decrease in comp claims last year?
Uh, we're about the same.
About the same?
Yeah. About the same. Usually, when there's a tougher winter, we'll have more comp claims, we'll have more slips, falls, and accidents, people walking into the buildings, you know. So healthcare, what a difference a year makes. The value plan had a much more manageable increase compared to last year, and retiree plans have also become more manageable, which is extremely helpful. The three contracts heading into the next budget year with the Simply Blue Deductible Plan as the base had a major impact. I won't include food service, that's separate from the general fund budget, because the food service fund, school lunch fund picks up that cost. So they've saved a little money in that as well. But the three major contracts that impact the general fund really did have an impact and mitigated our cost increases. That was tangible. So historically, what has healthcare done? Go back to two thousand two, two thousand and three, four point five million dollars to twenty-three point six million dollars, an increase of over twenty million dollars. This, we're not unique, this is just information, this is every district in New York State, regardless of where you are. We've actually, our increase is probably less than what many other areas have seen statewide. Our consortium plan, I know, is cheaper than the central New York plan, is cheaper than what's in the state capital region for school districts. So, you know, this isn't, this isn't unique, it's just something that we have to deal with and work towards a, towards a reducing, leveling off, and decreasing the increase is the best way to attack it.
So what does that mean? Sounds like a politician's statement.
Decreasing the increase.
So my question to you is, is so, to attack it, are we going to go to more high deductible? plans and other contracts and so forth?
That is, that's a negotiable item. And we're successful in those contracts, and it helped tremendously. That's why, when you look in a couple slides, this is just kind of the visual of where we spend our benefits. Obviously, the healthcare is the largest, TRS is the next, but if you look here at the numbers, we're at, our healthcare was at four point nine-one percent this year. Last year, if you compared sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, that was two million dollars, it was a million-dollar more increase in healthcare. So it's, that's why I say when we're decreasing the increase, that's, that's why.
That's a low, that's a low increase.
Correct.
That's what you're saying, I understand.
Correct, yeah.
But the other plans can make that decrease quite a bit.
I don't know.
So is that, correct?
Our healthcare is always, regardless of what the plan is, the claims are not going to stop, healthcare is always going to go up, 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 and up. It's just what plan is going to, you know, value in the deductible plan, actually, both for next year are going up at eight percent each, just one is significantly less overall cost than value, but it's still increasing at eight percent. So you take that one step back, but then you still have an increase on top of that.
I don't want to open a can of worms, son.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah. You're welcome.
So you see the TRS increase, three hundred and sixty thousand. Everything else, try to keep flat, small increase to dental, small increase to our life insurance costs, FICA going up, because that, you know, driven with salaries, no change to ERS for next year as well. So overall, our benefits entirely is at a four percent increase going into next year, about one point seven million dollars.
And how is that compared to other years?
Other years, it's been eight, been double that, so, you know, it's.
Four healthcare increase, eight percent's cheap. Private market, our benefits, our benefits.
You're looking at everything.
All the everything?
So summary of what we presented tonight, the total revenues on that first slide were a hundred and twenty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four, and the expenditures we present tonight, just a shade under eighty million dollars. So next meeting, we'll do a state aid update, we'll throw that into the revenues, and then we'll carry over all of our instructional areas and any other updates as necessary at that workshop, that we'll tack, but we'll tack all the instructional areas and state aid at the next workshop as well.
Okay, does anybody have any additional comments, questions?
No.
I, I just wanted to thank Brian and our staff for the never-ending task of making every dollar work for our students. We really appreciate it, and we know it's not just a, this time of year, it's really all year long, and we appreciate all the effort you put into that. So this concludes our workshop, thank you very much, and have a good evening, and go grocery shopping, just in case.
Milk and bread.
We hate the hysteria.
Go clean the shelves out.
Actually, is this live? This isn't even live, is it?
It's live.
What is live?